Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. And number 14. Ms. Clerk.
Item 14, Amendment to Contract for De La Guerra Plaza Preliminary Design and De La Guerra Plaza Revitalization Public Outreach Update.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Sarah Isa, Senior Planner in Public Works. I'm speaking on behalf of Brad Hess. He's Principal Project Manager in Public Works. He's on a longstanding planned family vacation today.
Okay.
So I'm joined by Ms. Suzanne Elitch of Suzanne Elitch Planning and Permitting Services, and also Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director. Today's presentation includes a description of our recommendation for an approval of an amendment to RRM Designs contract in the amount of $199,000 for architectural and design services for the De La Guerra Plaza revitalization project. We will also be discussing next steps and schedule for the project, and you will also receive an update on the De La Guerra Plaza revitalization project public outreach process from Ms. Elitch. Some recent history. Measure C was passed in November 2017, which was the one cent sales tax to provide funding for public infrastructure such as roads and the new police station. And in January of this year, council directed staff to pursue the De La Guerra Plaza revitalization project with two main objectives. The first, to facilitate existing and potential uses of the plaza, including Old Spanish Days and the potential relocation of the farmer's market, to activate the plaza, and then also to improve infrastructure, utilities, and aesthetics, and facilitate additional uses and further activate the plaza. The proposed project elements began with some basic assumptions before we could begin public outreach, and this includes creating a level plaza, which includes De La Guerra Street between State and Anacapa and St. Pascita, as well as a size that would accommodate all civic uses, as well as Old Spanish Days and the farmer's market should it be relocated, as well as City Hall parking during events, and further activation of this underutilized Some background on the RRM contract amendment. City staff published a request for qualifications in January of this year for design services. Interviews were held in February with six qualified firms. A panel of interdepartmental city staff unanimously agreed on RRM as the most qualified consulting firm to perform the work, based on their excellent relevant plaza experience. They have over 100 successful projects in Santa Barbara, as well as over 300 successful projects related to placemaking in various cities. In March, under the city administrator's authority, a contract for $12,000 was awarded to support public outreach, and as you know, a public workshop occurred on March 9th where they attended. And today, staff is seeking approval of an amendment to the contract in the amount of $199,000 for architectural and design services. The scope for the contract includes, between now and December 19th, a cultural landscape study, utility coordination and constraints plan of the site, preliminary schematic design, additional stakeholder meetings, a draft and final concept plan, a preliminary cost estimate, and design development. And as you know, a De La Guerra Plaza revitalization project subcommittee was formed under your authority, the council's authority, with two members each of city council. That's been officially formed, consisting of council members Dominguez and Sneddon, the Historic Landmarks Commissioners Drury and Vena, Parks and Recreation Commissioners Longstreet and Perry, and Planning Commissioners Jordan and Wiscom. The dates for the subcommittee meetings have been scheduled for April 10th, 24th, May 23rd, and June 5th, and all subcommittee meetings are open, publicly noticed, and will occur in Room 15, which is directly adjacent to these council chambers. Some next steps include a published document, which includes a summary of the outreach process to date, which will include stakeholder meeting updates and a summary of the data collected during the public workshop. Also, RRM will be creating the following constraint maps, constraints map, utility map, preliminary concept plan using public input data. And they will also be in attendance and taking the project through design and development review public meetings with various boards and commissions, including city council. Now I'd like to introduce Ms. Suzanne Elitch. You will be providing a summary of the trends that were received during the March 9th public workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Sarah. Madam Mayor and Council, it's a privilege to be here today and to be working together with the city on this very special project. I appreciate the opportunity to just give you a brief overview of what has happened to date on our stakeholder outreach. So while Mr. Hess, the project manager, has been in discussions with the farmer's market since the fall, the formal public outreach process was initiated in January, just after the first of the year. We have held dozens of meetings with individuals and businesses around the plaza and with many organizations. We had a community workshop earlier this month on Saturday, March 9th, which was very well-attended, and there's photos of it here, in which we literally obtained hundreds of comments that is part of, you know, what we are doing to find out what the community wants at De La Guerra Plaza. The baseline for all of these discussions, each time we sat down with someone and at the public workshop, we wanted to be sure that we covered these points with everyone. And that is that the plaza has such a long and rich history and was dedicated, we reminded everyone that it was dedicated as a public square in 1853, and even its use as a community gathering space even predates that. That the plaza and the surrounding buildings are a very special historic resource to our community, that there's a long history of community uses that have occurred there, and that there have been other attempts to improve the plaza in the past, and actually pretty recent times as well. As Sarah mentioned, the basic concept for the revitalization that we described to people as we obtained their thoughts about the plaza was that it would be, there would be a level plaza created from building to building throughout the plaza, including De La Guerra Street and St. Pascita. So that formed the context for our discussions. As we had these discussions, it became evident that there was sort of the primary series of topics that would come up, and they are summarized for you here on this slide. Uses and activities, both those that have happened in the past, the ones that happen now, and what potential uses could happen in the future if the plaza were to be revitalized. Design, and design was broad, covering historic resources, functionality, aesthetics, landscape, art, all of the components of how the project could be designed. Infrastructure, what would the surface material be? What about utilities, those that are there now, and how could they be improved? Lighting, and are there other facilities that people want to see in the plaza? And then parking, circulation, and access. These were the big topics that came up in all of our discussions. So as I mentioned, we literally received hundreds of comments, and these are documented in a variety of ways. The meeting notes, as we had the individual meetings. At the workshop, we had comment cards, a survey and questionnaire that people could fill out. They were able to markup plaza exhibits, and we've got examples of those just pictured here, as well as all the notes that we made on flip charts and the notes of the facilitators who worked at the workshop. So we are now taking all of that raw data and categorizing it so that it can be easily digested, and right now, all of the raw data is actually up on the city's website for this project. And at the end of this week, we intend to have, what Sarah mentioned earlier, is a summary report that pulls it all together and makes it easy to review. And we encourage you to take a look at these comments. Our community was very enthusiastic and excited about the prospect of revitalizing De La Guerra Plaza. Not to say that there aren't some people who would like to see no changes there, there are certainly those people as well, but by far, there was a lot of excitement and enthusiasm that this might happen, and I just want to share with you. And so if you go to the site, you get to see everybody's comments, and they really are creative and innovative. This next slide shows an eight-year-old who participated in the workshop, and his dream is that we might have a wave pool in the middle of the plaza, a skateboard park with ramps located where he's shown them. And I, you know, I don't think that this will pass muster with HLC, but I did want you to know that each one of these comments and marked-up exhibits are part of the record and will be taken into account, and who knows where a creative design team might take us with all these comments, but I thought that was pretty cool that an eight-year-old participated and marked up his plan, too. I wanted to just sort of summarize, since we had so many comments, I wanted to give you a good overview and summary of what we've heard. So as I said, the general consensus across all groups, be they individuals, merchants around the plaza, organizations that we spoke to, is that there is clearly excitement and support for plaza revitalization. There's many creative improvement ideas for, you know, for the design of the plaza, many suggestions for additional community uses and activities, a deep respect across the board throughout our community for the historic resources that exist in the plaza, and a desire to bring locals back downtown. That was said over and over again. Yes, we love the idea of activating the plaza, and we like tourism, but what this should be about is bringing our locals back downtown, and we should have activities that appeal to people throughout our community. So primary public concerns boil down to these bullet points, that the city needs to better maintain the beauty, safety, and function of the plaza. There was an emphasis, as I just said, on activities that draw locals back downtown, protecting historic resources in and around the plaza, and maintaining civic and community uses. So all the traditional things that have happened in the plaza, people want to see those maintained along with the possibility of introducing the farmer's market and other new uses to the plaza. Primary concerns of businesses around the plaza are that they are able to maintain customer convenience, especially with respect to parking and access. They had a strong preference to maintain the existing parking and access that is in the plaza today, and they were also concerned about disruption that might occur during construction of a revitalization project, and they requested that they be well, that they be given advanced notice of when the construction schedule would begin, how long it would be, and so forth, and that there be good signage that's put up about businesses remaining open and that their site, that their businesses remain visible to the public. This slide is intended to sort of summarize those basic topics that we talked about earlier and show you sort of the top responses to each of these different categories. As I said, there were hundreds of responses, but the ones that are shown on this slide were repeated over and over again by many people who participated in the workshop and who we had meetings with. So uses and activities, there were strong voices to ensure that new uses would not supplant the plaza's civic function, as I mentioned earlier. And music, music was mentioned over and over and over again, all different kinds of music, small bands, local bands, acoustic, amplified, bring it on, that's what people want, lots of music in the plaza. Free lunchtime concerts were suggested, concerts at other times, and meaning off times so as to not unreasonably compete with other downtown music venues, that was mentioned. And an outdoor meeting place is something that people really would like to see. They envision meeting friends for a quick cup of coffee or lunch in the plaza in the heart of our downtown. And after hearing some of the items, the item earlier today, I'm thinking that maybe poetry readings would be a good thing to have in the middle of the plaza, too. The design, regarding design, many of the suggestions corresponded to the comments about uses and activities. So in other words, cafe tables and chairs, so that people would have a place to sit and have a coffee or eat with their friends. Landscaping, to soften the plaza, and specifically shade trees were mentioned quite frequently. Regarding infrastructure, a permeable surface that was the vast majority of participants would like to see in the plaza. And supporting the popular suggestion for music was the idea of having a permanent or temporary stage for concerts. And there was actually an intriguing idea about a temporary stage that actually comes in a kit, it can fold up and be stored away very efficiently, and in the kit comes outlets for power and lighting, and it makes it easy to put up. That was an interesting idea. Regarding parking, circulation, and access, many opinions about parking and access, this is probably the most critical topic, and I've got a couple of additional slides on this coming up. Parking is a critical concern as well to the farmer's market, in addition to people wanting to ensure that there's adequate parking for all the uses that might occur in the plaza. I did want to highlight a request we heard several times about the need for more accessible parking around the plaza and for people trying to do business at City Hall. There's passionate opinions about things. We have a very active citizenry, as you well know, and there are strong opinions about certain things. As I said, there's an impressive list of potential activities and uses that have been identified by the community, and this slide sort of separates the possible uses and activities into the categories of dining and social, civic, and arts and entertainment. And again, these highlight those things that we heard most frequently from people. You'll notice that there's sort of a heart theme running through the presentation, the plaza's in the heart of our city, that's where it all started, and that with the plaza being located in the heart of downtown, in listening closely to our community, the heart symbolism is actually quite strong and apparent. People spoke from their heart, and the enthusiasm expressed for revitalizing the plaza came from a love of its rich history as a cultural and civic center, and also from a love of community, where local citizens could gather. The idea is that local citizens could gather in the plaza for a wide range of regularly-scheduled activities and engage with one another. From general consensus and popular suggestions, I'd also like to tell you about some of the other passionate opinions we heard that reflect a spectrum of opinion rather than consensus. So when it comes to parking and circulation, we had people who would like to, and this was again predominantly the businesses around the plaza, maintain existing access and parking just as it is, and on the other end of the spectrum, make the plaza pedestrian only. Majority of the citizens that responded and came to the workshop strongly preferred the plaza being pedestrian only, and if it had to be, then making exceptions for deliveries and emergency vehicles was also something that was okay, but there was a strong preference for pedestrian only. Another similar topic like that was the plaza's surface. Some people felt strongly that lawn should be retained, and others that the plaza really should be hardscape. A majority of the citizens preferred a permeable paving with landscaped trees, planters, and possibly a small amount of lawn. So I want to go back to that for a second. I think the idea here, again with the heart in the center, is that in order to come up with the right solution for our community, we need to bring heart to that process, and there's going to probably need to be compromise, and perhaps that's where the solutions lie, is somewhere in the middle of these very disparate opinions. So this slide, one of the survey questions that we asked of the workshop was, how, if, how, let me just actually read it to you. What is the one word that best sums up your vision of what the new plaza could be? And this word cloud has each of the responses that we got, and it's inspiring to look at, and it doesn't indicate by looking at the word cloud which one that, if there were some that were said multiple times. And I want to tell you what the three top responses were, because I think it's inspiring as we move forward. The three top responses were community, active, and historic. And when you take those words together with the others that were listed as, you know, what people think of when they think about the new plaza, I do think it's inspiring as we move forward. Finally, we mentioned the website. All of the raw data is up on the website, so will the summary report be by the end of the week, and we encourage people to go there. You can subscribe online if you'd like to get updates about the project, and there's also a way to provide comments through the website, so we encourage everybody to do that. And happy to answer questions, although you still have more to say, don't you?
Thank you, Ms. Elitch. So staff recommends approval of the amendment to the RRM contract in the amount of $199,040, and also approve the funding recommendations provided in the staff report today. And we're available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Dominguez?
So I have a question about procedurally or timeline. What would happen if we pushed this contract back until the summer, when we're getting information back from Cosmont? The council approved a contract for a consultant, and they've been studying ideas to revitalize downtown, and then we're working on some negotiations with Paseo Nuevo, a few phases, one with their main mall, and then one with Macy's. So if we tried to do something a little larger scale that would require us to push it back, what would be the impact?
The impact would be that the contract would obviously not move forward, and it would be out of phase with the possible relocation of the farmer's market related to the police station project.
And that's really the only impact? And if we were to do something larger scale, like looking at a downtown master plan, is this contractor someone who we've talked to about that, or would we have to look at a new scope?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director. I think that we could continue today with this contractor, and if we wanted to do something larger, we would be able to modify that and bring in additional scope. A lot of the preliminary work that needs to be done is around studies, gathering information, gathering public input, and some just really technical information that we would need to get for any project. So it won't commit us to anything, but it would get us more ready to move forward with something if we continued with this today.
Mr. Casey?
Yeah, just to, Councilmember Dominguez mentioned a couple items. One, the Cosmont study, that is kind of the downtown strategic plan, what are some things that we should be doing, they're actively working, they should be back to council in the next two to three months, I assume, and I think placemaking is probably going to be part of what they're looking at. With regards to the Paseo Nuevo, you approved a term sheet, it's for a revitalization, they're already beginning construction on it. What needs to occur is the development agreement language, it goes to planning commission and back to council, so I'm not sure waiting on that informs a whole lot. And then on Macy's, I'd hate to kind of wait on Macy's, because that's probably, that's up to Pacific Retail, and that's just kind of private sector-driven, so we don't control the schedule for when they're ready to move, and if they do something larger and bigger, that'll be more complicated and take quite some time to work its way through. Overall, slowing this process down is an option for you. We're trying to move forward because the police building is a priority, so we're trying to solve that nut. This is a priority, trying to solve that nut. Council can always kind of change the pace and activity level that we make on those efforts, that's up to you.
Any other questions, Mr. Dominguez?
No, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Casey, I just need to clarify, we haven't chosen the Cota commuter lot for the police station.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I didn't mention the Cota commuter lot, I just mentioned that need to move on finding a location for the police station and moving that project forward. You've got a lot of different options that you've been looking at, that Cota commuter lot is one of them, but we've been looking at other options as well. Louise Lowery-Davis, and we gave a whole presentation to you on a number of sites that we've been looking at and the pros and cons with that.
Okay. Ms. Sneddon, and then Mr. Friedman.
Thank you. I realize we're going to have a lot of public comment also, so as I'm listening to that, I'd like the filter of knowing, so procedurally again, in the timeline, at what point does your information gathering need to diverge and really focus on making this a project that would accommodate, say, the farmer's market, or is a project that's purely about taking all the input and just focusing on the plaza independent of that? Where in this stage does that happen?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, I think, you know, there's a lot of excitement about doing something in De La Guerra Plaza, is what we've heard, a lot of strong opinions as well. I think the basic premise of making it a space that can accommodate as many different types of events and venues as possible to activate downtown would remain a basic premise. So I think that really trying to make it a multi-use space is an objective, it's certainly what we're hearing, we've heard lots of different ideas about how to use it. So I'm not sure, certainly with some of the plumbing systems and electrical systems, that might be informed if we did decide to relocate the farmer's market here. As we've said, the farmer's market's on a lot that may not remain a parking lot forever, so I think it would be wise regardless to plan so that this could be a future home if they wanted to move here. But, so I don't have a very specific answer as to when in the process, but I'm not sure how much that would actually affect the design.
Thanks. Mr. Friedman?
So just to clarify, there's two uses. One is a potential use of the farmer's market, but there's also all these other potential community uses that were discussed at the public outreach that tie into what Councilmember Dominguez was referring to, our revitalization of downtown, correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Friedman. That's correct. Again, when we entered the discussions with everybody, including at the workshop, the presumption was that there would be a single level throughout the plaza. That serves the farmer's market, but it also makes the plaza quite functional for Old Spanish Days, Fiesta, and the other users, the other regular users of the plaza, and that's the feedback we got from them. So that's a positive treatment of the plaza regardless of whether or not the farmer's market is there.
And two more questions, one along this line is, if we did want to take another look at other potential sites, we could do another look, sites for the farmer's market, we could do a last round with the subcommittee, the police station's subcommittee, correct, Mr. Casey, where we would have one last meeting, look at other potential sites, and we could actually do these concurrently, correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman, your question was looking at other sites for the farmer's market or other sites for the police station?
For, for the police station, sorry.
Again, that's up to the city council about how you want to do that. You do have a police station's subcommittee that you could refer this back to, to take another look and discussion at. Ultimately, we will have to do environmental review on any location for police station that'll look at a primary site and then alternative sites as well. At some point, we're going to have to make a decision, but the right process is to get to that decision-making process, we're totally open to working with you as to how to do that.
And then one last question, kind of switching to topics, is we've been contacting, and I know I have been, in regards to the 2011 Campbell design for the plaza, can you articulate why that, what the kind of scope of that, and why we're not going with that design?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Friedman. The Campbell and Campbell design is old now, it's over 10 years old, and we all decided that it would be a good idea to start fresh, but using the existing technical studies. So we're relying on all of the technical studies prior and building a new conceptual design. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harmon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to confirm my understanding of something that was said. In terms of where we are in this process, any of the work that we're going to be doing in this phase is baseline work that will need to be done regardless of whatever potential future use for this space we decide on, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember, yes. That's correct. Thank you.
Very good. We have a lot of public comment, so we'll go there. Francesca Hunter, you're first, and if you could get ready to come up, that would help us move the meeting along. We have this item and another big one afterwards. After that, Bill Palmasano? Everyone's going to get a chance, Ms. Hunter, so please come on up. Yeah. Are you worried they won't get a chance? Everyone gets a chance.
It starts at 4:00, and they're usually there.
It starts at 4:00, and they're usually there on Tuesdays, so I was just going to say they could go before me if they wanted to.
I'll sort through them. You go ahead and start.
Okay.
Thanks.
My name's Francesca Hunter, and I am here on behalf of our community.
Get right up close to the microphone, please. Yeah.
My name's Francesca Hunter, and I'm here on behalf of our community. And it just feels to me that there's a lack of awareness of the importance of the farmer's market. And I do appreciate the question that was asked, or I don't know why. It sounded as though the decision was already made to put the police office, the police headquarters, down at the Cota Street. But I've heard that that's already a done deal. I hope it's not. Because, okay, the farmer's market, first of all, I don't think that if you don't go to the farmer's market that you would ever understand how valuable it is on a huge rippling effect, really. First of all, everyone knows that organic, local, healthy produce with no pesticides, it's a huge subject in the world today because there's a lot of ill health. And a healthy diet is extremely important. Furthermore, I feel like our farmers are really unsung heroes that provide us, we are some of the luckiest people in the entire world to have the variety of produce that we have here. And it's like looking a gift horse in the mouth, not to honor and appreciate our farmers. The open land that surrounds Santa Barbara that is creating the beauty that we have here, there are very few people really upholding that and just doing something good, really, really important and good in Santa Barbara that is pure. That is what Santa Barbara is about. And there are so many bars and breweries, and the funk zone is now the drunk zone. The farmer's market is one place that people can come together that's healthy. They bring their families. They meet with friends. It's a consistent rain or shine venue. And if it were to be moved to De La Guerra Plaza, basically, first of all, no one's going to be carrying bags of avocados and oranges and honey jars three blocks. No children, no old people, no people with poor health are going to be able to do that. Second of all, one of the greatest things about the market is the variety. We would be cutting way back on a million, like so many things that provide food for our restaurants. Some of the best restaurants here are serving local, organic produce. That's a huge draw for tourists. What else did I want to say? Looking at these plans, there's no room for a stage and benches and tables and trees and the farmer's market. That's just never going to happen, all of that.
Your time is up. So, thank you so much. Sandy Lejeune, I pulled you out of the stack. I know that you are active with the farmer's market. So, yeah, go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am a longtime member of the Santa Barbara Certified Farmer's Market Association, 24 years now. I really came today just to clear up what I hope is not a misconception, and that is that the members of our association who sell at the Saturday Market, which is in the Cota Street commuter lot, as you know, are either eager or open or desirous of moving to De La Guerra Plaza. We don't want to move anywhere. We've been in our location for 30 years, I believe. It's a location that serves the public, that serves the farmers. As was just mentioned by Ms. Hunter, there are myriad reasons for respecting and upholding and supporting this institution. That is, that is at the center and the heart of much of what makes Santa Barbara an attractive, healthy, and beautiful place to live. And if you make it more difficult for farmers who farm on a smaller scale, as most of the farmers who are members of our association do, to market their produce to local people, it's only going to drive that population of farmers further afield. They won't all leave the Saturday Market, but some of them will because the opportunities to make money exist in other locations and might be able to serve them better. I know there are competing interests at work with the commuter lot on Cota Street, but I just want to make it very clear that I don't know any farmer who sells at that market that is eager or excited or even slightly enthusiastic about moving anywhere.
Thank you. We, we don't applaud here. We don't allow booing or applauding, so neither one is acceptable. Victoria Sarkia, you look like you, she had to leave? Oh, darn it. Okay, we missed her. Noe Turk, are you still here? Okay. Go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, Members of Council. My name is Noe Turk. I'm a third-generation farmer in the San Ynez Valley. I've been selling at the farmer's market in Santa Barbara for 23 years. I'm the president of the Board of Directors for the Farmer's Market Association, a mutual nonprofit association run by its members. I'd like to just outline the way that I see the progression that seems to be unfolding. There's a move to put the police station and the Cota Street Lot. That is right across the street from the blue line. In the event of catastrophic flooding, our first responders would be in jeopardy at a time when we need them the most. The displacement of the farmer's market to De La Guerra Plaza is not to the advantage of the farmers. It's too small. There's less adjacent parking. That means no new farmers, no musicians, no fountains, no benches. Having the farmer's market in De La Guerra Plaza displaces certain elements of the community. It's a gathering space. It's a space for free speech. The needs of the market and the needs of the community in De La Guerra Plaza are not compatible. So, we've created this conflict between public safety, food security, and community gathering, free speech. We have worked in good faith with city planners, and at this time, our needs have not been met, and there is no indication that they will be met. It's hard to transplant a well-established tree into shallow ground, and if it doesn't take, the loss is not recoverable. So, I'm asking you to put more thought into this, to take more time with it, and to be sure that you really cared for the heart of this town. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Ariana Rose Palmisano, are you someone that needs to go first? Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ariana Rose Palmisano, and I would like to acknowledge the mayor and the city council for their hard work on this issue. I am a farmer. I started my own farm two years ago here in Santa Barbara in Mission Canyon on one acre. I am a young businesswoman, and I feel like my livelihood is being overlooked. The options that have been put on the table are insufficient. De La Guerra Plaza is troublesome for many reasons. I would just like to put this issue away and get on with my farm and farmer's markets. For the sake of my own business and these other farmers and our loyal customers, we need to stay in our present location. Thank you for listening to my reasoning.
Okay. Bill Palmisano?
My name is Bill Palmisano. Thank you, Madam Mayor and Board. I've been attending the farmer's market since it was at Santa Barbara High School parking lot, a long time. I've seen it grow organically into a vibrant economic activity that provides healthy, affordable food for our population and a market for an endangered species here with land prices, local farmers. The option of De La Guerra Plaza will hurt the farm, or will hurt the farmer's market drastically. It's too small, and the Saturday Market supports other farmer's markets that one or more of them might have to close. I just want to say that I would like you to please consider this local entity that grew all by itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we won't accept any more slips for this item. Patty Love, are you someone who needs to leave early? Or Randy Wade? Okay, very good. So, Mr. Wade, you go ahead.
Good afternoon. Randy Wade, founding member of Santa Barbara Farmer's Market. I can see you're all very excited about De La Guerra Plaza. That's great. We're not. Like Sandy said, we're perfectly happy there. Let's see. We spent 35 years at the Cota Street Lot. Our customer base is, let's see, on Saturday, we're very busy with between 5,000 and 6,000 people come through our market each Saturday, not each Saturday, on a busy market. Our research shows that some of these customers spend money on the state street corridor where you need help. We're actually the best business in this town for bringing people downtown. Moving us disrupts us, our customers, local businesses, and the protest people that use De La Guerra Plaza on Saturday mornings. We project a loss of 30% to 40% of our customers with this move. That could take us years to recover. De La Guerra Plaza will attract tourists who wander through our market empty-handed, sampling our wares. Our business relies on local traffic. The Cota Street Lot is doing its job. Saturday Market, Saturday, we're there Saturdays, rain or shine. During the rest of the week, we have a much-needed commuter lot for people that can't afford to live here. Where are they going to park? This is just a bad idea.
Okay. Beebe Longstreet, you'll be followed by Sheila Lodge, Melissa Saronghen, John Dordon. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Beebe Longstreet. I'm on the Parks and Recreation Commission and will be on the subcommittee. And I'm here to support the revitalization of De La Guerra Plaza. This is not a new idea and is long overdue to be brought back to life. For many years, the plaza has been a sorry piece of grass surrounded by parking and feeling quite separate from Casa de La Guerra. It doesn't function well for fiesta or any other events. It needs updating. This project has gained momentum because of the new police station and the possible relocation of farmer's market, but there are other reasons to revitalize the plaza. The city needs to bring life back to downtown, and with plans for more housing comes the need for more open, attractive public spaces. I envision Christmas market, art show days, first Thursday events, and concerts to bring life back to the area. I look forward to sitting on the visioning committee and listening to people's ideas. This is the type of energy we need to see happen in our downtown, and I do see this as a need separate from whatever else happens with the police department because our downtown needs to be re-envisioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lodge, are you here?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I am Sheila Lodge. First, I'd like to say I agree with everything that Mrs. Longstreet had to say, and I too urge you to support the staff recommendation to move ahead with the work that needs to be done before anything can happen in De La Guerra Plaza. And I'm one of these loyal customers that we're referred to. I've been shopping at the farmer's market almost every Saturday, ever since it was in the Santa Barbara High School parking lot. And somehow, I found my way to the Cota Street Lot, and somehow, all the other shoppers did too, and I know they would be able to find their way to De La Guerra Plaza if it does get moved. It has the same amount of space, including Stork Placita, almost, a little bit less, including Stork Placita and De La Guerra Street as far as the farmer's market is concerned. The plaza's historic architecture will make a better setting, a more attractive setting for the market than its current location. And I'm sure the city will spend whatever it takes to inform the public about if, about what's happening, if the market's going to be moved. It is a, the farmer's market is a vital part of Santa Barbara, and I indeed want to see it continue. As far as the plaza is concerned, in the mid-1990s, some 20 benches, which used to sit on those brick plads that are out there that you may have noticed, were removed, along with two benches that were on the porch on either side of the city hall doors. They are sitting out here on this deck, unused and have been ever since. They were removed to discourage the use of the plaza by the homeless. The result was to turn the plaza over to the homeless entirely. And this is an opportunity to take the plaza back. And I believe even moving the market has a potential for making it more successful than it is while adding to downtown's revitalization. Thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Saronghen, are you here? John Dordon, after you. Brian Rosen, Paulina Khan, Fred Sweeney. Hi.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name is Melissa Saronghen. I'm a baker, a miller, and a wheat farmer, first generation for my business, Pietra Sassi Wine and Bread in North County, and I'm a member of the farmer's market. I'm also a board member of the Santa Barbara County Farmer's Market Association. The proposal as a revitalization of a community plaza and for beautification of this city is a really wonderful one, which I support as a member of this community. I think it has great potential for our city. Today, however, I would like to express my concern that the De La Guerra Plaza revitalization proposal and relocation of the farmer's market does not satisfy the minimum requirements of the Farmer's Market Association. As has been said by some of my colleagues at the farmer's market board and by some of our other farmers, in working with the planning commission and getting deeper into the details of the layout and limitations of De La Guerra Plaza, we have become increasingly concerned that the many requirements for the basic operations of the farmer's market may not be compatible with De La Guerra Plaza and moreover, may not be compatible with the needs of the many other stakeholders and community members that need to use the plaza and/or have a right to use the plaza. Currently, I cannot in good conscience support this proposal. With, among other problems, not enough accessible guaranteed parking and not enough space for the current existing stalls, just the bare minimum needed for our farmers to be able to sell what we grow is not achieved. We have been in conversation with city officials for a solution, but at this moment have not reached a point of reassurance that the current state of proposal will be adequate. It is not quite clear if we can come to that point with this proposed new site. I say this now because as you are voting on a substantial amount of money to be added to this project, I must speak out, as I would want a potential buyer of my crop to voice his concerns before I bought. his concerns before I bought seed or planted that he might not be able to use my crop. If you move ahead with this project, please know that I and my colleagues may not find it a solution for our needs. Some may find it silly for our organization to be so insistent on one market, but this market generates more than one-half of our association's operating expense. If dealt the blow of an unsuccessful site, move all of our markets throughout the city and county that we organize will be impacted. The asset to our community may be forever changed. We are not just one organization either, but hundreds of small businesses that depend on this market for their very survival. Please take this into account in your decisions, both the current agenda item and the others that affect the farmer's market. Thank you.
Thank you. John Dordon?
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is John Dordon, and I am a member of the Board of Directors of the Santa Barbara Preservation Trust. And in that regard, I want you to know that the trust is very much in favor of the revitalization project, but my comments and the trust's interest are quite independent of the farmer's market relocation or the police station relocation. In fact, I'd just like to make two points. Like this council, the Trust for Historic Preservation has a responsibility to the citizens of Santa Barbara, in fact, the citizens of all of California, to be the proper stewards of the sites, the buildings, the improvements that the trust owns, preserves, and manages, and that includes a very large lot right out the window here, immediately adjacent to the plaza, as well as several other properties that are actually within a few hundred feet of the plaza. So in order to carry out that responsibility, the trust feels very strongly that it needs to be a vital and integral partner in the revitalization project process that will unfold over the next few weeks, the next several months, or perhaps even later. So in that regard, because we have a keen interest in the impact of the revitalization project and a responsibility to the people of Santa Barbara to participate as a partner, we just want the council to know that the trust stands ready to fulfill that role. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Rosen?
Hi. I want to mention that we're truly in such an uprooted society. I think that tradition is very important and continuity, and we keep ripping out our traditions and changing them, and this helps connect the past with the present. I think we need to have some things that don't change. All those beautiful trees in the farmer's market are going to, most of them will have to be uprooted. That will be a great loss to the community. Let's keep that in mind. I love De La Guerra Plaza. I've been going there since the '70s. I think it's beautiful. I think we could put some new grass in there. There are some beautiful trees. I hope to God we could just leave it alone, but to me, it's absolutely gorgeous, and I think we have higher priorities. Our society is not doing the right priorities with our money. Money could be going towards children's programs and preventing crime. I bet if we didn't spend $80 to $160 million on a police station with cost overruns and we put that into prevention and community and children's programs, we would reduce a lot more crime. I wish that the police station could, I don't think we should mess with community and tradition unless there's overwhelming consensus from the community. Otherwise, there's going to be bad feelings, so this would have to be a lengthy process. Across from the high school is a big piece of land. My dream is to have less, some temporary buildings over there and to reduce crime in the community. They even say that meditating will reduce crime. We need to ask for the highest good for this community. Pray to the divine, whatever you consider it. Crime will be reduced. I pray to God crime will be reduced. We'll need less police and less police station and putting money into prevention and teachers and wonderful things that reduce crime. And we could then, while the temporary buildings over there, we could redo the current station, even tearing it down, expanding it into the parking lot, making it bigger. There is a lot of parking, I understand, around the current police station that could be, the building could be expanded, parking could go underground, but whatever we do, and we could add another story perhaps, make an exception, and this will maintain our tradition of the police station where it's at, so we have some continuity between the past and the present and not be such an uprooted society. It's close to the courthouse, which is very useful when police people have to go testify. So I pray for the highest good. We need wisdom in both of these cases, and thank you very much for listening to me today.
Thanks. Paulina Khan, you'll be followed by Fred Sweeney, Mike Jordan.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I believe we're putting the cart before the horse. You have heard from the farmer's market, this is not a good place for them. I think we have not looked at whether we should be closing off De La Guerra Street. This plaza is working now. There is no guarantee with revitalization, as you call it, that there will be revitalization. The homelessness needs have to be fixed first. If you put coffee tables and chairs and benches here, it will be occupied, but not by the people that are going to be frequenting the businesses. During Fiesta, that is, the summertime is the farmer's market's busiest time. Fiesta El Mercado is our tradition here in this plaza, and it works beautifully. On Saturday morning, there are the children's parade, El Mercado, there's the Guadalupe Church with the tamales, and there is the farmer's market. Where will the farmer's market be during Fiesta? This is just so unfair. We have got to de-link the police station from De La Guerra Plaza. We have to think of both of them totally independently and keep the farmer's market where it is or find a place. When I first started, and Peter and I did participate in the farmer's market in the 1970s when it was at Santa Barbara High School, we were selling blackberries and string beans until the price of water went up and we couldn't afford it anymore. So please do not, at this time, give the contract to RRM. Please relook at everything that was done with the Campbell and Campbell revitalization plan. All of these preliminary works were done, and this one was in 2011. It's not that long ago, only eight years. So please don't start wasting our money just because you have Measure C money and now Measure A money. We need to save those funds for when they are really needed. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Cunningham wants to give you his two minutes. If you could do it in three minutes, I would be grateful, however.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have one, if someone could turn on the, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will try very much in council. I'm going to read my statement because I did it in three minutes, but I do, now that I got a little extra time, I just wanted to share with you, "Life, sometimes, full circle. As an architect, I participated in San Luis Obispo's similar activity back in the 1990s when they closed the street in front of Monterey, Monterey Street in front of the Mission and turned it into their living room for their city, and I participated in a process to develop, in addition to the City Hall and a Civic Center master plan, that was part of a much bigger effort by a community committee appointed by the City Council to look at the entire downtown. Some 20 years later now, that plan is actually coming into fruition." So, full circle. Now we're back to here. So let me first start by saying under full disclosure that I was asked to sit on interview team who was not selected for this project. I am retired, and I'm sure that if I had been selected, I would have probably worked for gas money. My comments should in no way be interpreted as disparaging remarks for this highly qualified firm being considered today. In fact, I almost went to work for them when I graduated from college. My remarks would like to focus on the process now in play. I'm concerned that the rush to accommodate the site selection for the new police station could affect the future of how we as a community use De La Guerra Plaza for many years to come. In Jim Collins' book, Good to Great, he talks about getting the right people on the bus and putting those people in the right seat in order to have a successful outcome. My perception is that we are not getting all the right people on the bus, and we may not be getting them in the right seats. It's my opinion that a similar fate awaits us with regards to completion of the Library Plaza project. I think we missed a wonderful opportunity there. Were under city guidance, we could have found a way for a much more successful project if we had the museum and the library engage in a project scope which opened their buildings directly into the plaza. The library, by reconsidering its relocation of its circulation desks so that it looked into the plaza, and the museum is by using the project to allow the engagement of their café directly on the plaza. This would have allowed many eyes watching and engaging with that space. As it is, we will probably not get a vibrant community space, but rather a retread of the old space. As some of you may know, I was one of several architects and designers who, over the years, that have participated in studies of how De La Guerra Plaza should be reconsidered. That's in a book I think I saw a couple of you have up here on the dais. So, De La Guerra Plaza, in my opinion, is the living room of our city, so should we continue to allow cars to be parked and driven through that living room? This project does not stand in isolation. It will always be a vital part of the entire fabric of our downtown. The plaza has a direct relationship to the buildings and functions that face that plaza and are immediately in a secondary layer of uses just beyond those areas. The uses of the news press parking lots, the city parking lot, the relationship to State Street via Stork Placita and De La Guerra Street are essential to the success of any solution for De La Guerra Plaza. The influence and relationship to Paseo Nuevo is also critical in making our living room a vibrant public space during all times of the day and the week, not just on Saturdays. We must willing to be, to think in much broader terms, we must engage and make an integral part of any definition of a design team's scope of work, that consensus of adjacent property owners, businesses, and others who have direct relationship to that plaza. All of these need to be able to sit at the table. Please don't shortchange Santa Barbara's rich history of making our special places by overlooking the ability to really engage in the long-term consequences of a short-term decision. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Michael Jordan. Ann Peterson, we don't applaud, please. Ann Peterson, after you. Carrie Kelly.
Madam Mayor and council members, I was just going to talk to your action today, but you give me a moment. You know how that goes. The young lady to the left of me could tell you, every month you delay on making a decision on the police station adds a number with a whole bunch of zeros on the end to the cost. I'd encourage you to move that along. And past the cliche of what our police department deserves to live and work in, I've actually turned, as I'm sure most of you have, that building, and it's just not a facility for anybody to work in, not just our first responders. And so again, I'd encourage you to move forward. When you step outside on that balcony, you look and see what 170 years of planning has done with the plaza so far. It's an empty spot in downtown. It's unattractive. It's unengaging. You have the opportunity to actually put in place the next 100 years of what that will look like. I would encourage you to adopt the staff's recommendation today. I enthusiastically will participate as a Planning Commission member on that subcommittee, and I'm looking forward for improvements to be made, all in line of what Commissioner Longstreet and Commissioner Lodge had to share. I'd just like to offer you three quick points on how that committee will work. A couple of you were a part of the Housing Task Force with me and a couple others in the room, and frequently had public comment take up more time at those meetings than actual discussion and work by the committee members. So I encourage you, when you get ready to bake this and pull it out of the oven, that you put a structure in place where we actually get time to work on this subject rather than listen to public comment for a whole meeting. I also question whether, along with, sort of on the lines of Commissioner, of Councilman Dominguez's question, whether we're actually under-resourcing this project. I don't really like the idea of a delay, but this is a project that will define the city for 100 years or more, and are there more resources, more sources of information that we could be bringing to the planning of this project to really get what's known out there in other cities around the world, around the country, as to what a plaza would look like, not just in name, but in function? And then finally, until you can tell the farmer's market that they're not going to move, I think they deserve a seat at the table on the committee. There, other than the general public, who would be the largest stakeholders in the improvements we're talking about, the farmer's market would be the next largest stakeholder using that facility if they had to move. And I think it's just frustrating and irresponsible not to include them with a seat at the table unless you can tell them they're not going to move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Members of the City Council, my name's Ann Peterson. I'm the Executive Director of the Santa Barbara Trust for Historic Preservation, and we own and operate Casa de La Guerra on Plaza de La Guerra, and in this role, we are supportive of seeing changes to the plaza. We've been working with the city in support of changes to the plaza for 20 to 25 years now, when we started our restoration of Casa de La Guerra. We work with the city on the Plaza de La Guerra Reconsidered book that some of you have here, which is a reflection of a community symposium in partnership with the city and a related exhibition. And in that book, we charted the very long history of multiple plans to make improvements to the plaza that were never realized. We congratulate the city on a successful first public outreach workshop on March 9th. The trust supports a continued public outreach process to ensure that all the stakeholders have a chance to make their voices heard. Our primary interest in this project is to improve connectivity between the plaza and Casa de La Guerra, to interpret and honor the historical connection between the two spaces. Pertaining to Casa de La Guerra in particular, our requests include improved visual connectivity through a raised street surface and hardscaping on De La Guerra Street that emphasizes the relationship between the two spaces, removal of all parking in front of Casa de La Guerra in order to restore the relationship between the casa and the plaza. We would like to see regularly scheduled public events in the plaza. During those events, we'd like to work with the city to ensure that the casa is not blocked by vendor tents or event infrastructure. Rather, we would love to see the casa incorporated into those events by avoiding visual barriers and working with the trust on opportunities to activate the casa courtyard as part of these events. In addition, we know that the following will be shaped by the stakeholder collective, and we are very supportive of that process. We want to achieve consensus on these points, but we encourage the city to think about the entire plaza, including the one block of De La Guerra Street, having it made one level with the single-surface treatment. We'd like the city to consider suitable alternatives to the grass in the plaza's interior and explore the removal of parking except for emergency and event-related and business delivery vehicles. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Carrie Kelly, you'll be followed by Bonnie Raisen, Lanny Ebenstein, Patty Love.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Carrie Kelly, and I'm the Executive Director of Downtown Santa Barbara. I think in everything that we do, we want to have a lot of public engagement, and I've certainly heard that today, and I'm so excited that we had so many community members here speaking to the councils. I'm very happy about that. I sort of see this as two separate issues that have come up today. I've only been here a few months, but what I've heard from our merchants downtown is that the farmer's market absolutely has to stay downtown. It is vital to our downtown to have that farmer's market. Outside of that, Downtown Santa Barbara is in favor of public spaces for community events and activities, and the De La Guerra Plaza is vital part of that to our downtown and to the community. We support improvements to the De La Guerra Plaza and encourage continued public outreach on the part of the city to have more citizens engaged in the process. We are very interested in the plaza's connectivity to State Street, and I hope that we can engage in a larger discussion about that connectivity. Should the project go forward, we need adequate resources to maintain, secure, and program that space, and we would also, as an organization, like to take the lead in helping to program and activate that space. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Raisen, I saw you earlier. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Well, 1853, to me, let's see, 1853, wouldn't that make that a historical monument? I mean, couldn't it be? You know, right across the street, we have a very memorable building, right up on Canton Prudito Street, we have another one. We should preserve, that's the Presidio, we should preserve as many of these as we can. Excuse me for the way I'm talking. I've had a slight minor cerebral damage.
No problem.
I'm going to talk anyway, in spite of it, because I really, really want you to put a brass plaque there with the date on it, who, maybe the contractor or whoever designed it should be there, and it would complement the building across the street. it should be there, and it would complement the building across the street. It also, this building itself is an architectural nicety for downtown, and I, I really encourage you not to change much, except perhaps maintain it. Having no parking around the plaza would probably be all right, but I think it would be a detriment to the businesses or to people who need to drop off important papers at City Hall. So perhaps you could reduce the 15-minute parking spaces. I, I would like to see De La Guerra Plaza enhanced in terms of honoring it, and therefore to consider it a historical, of historical value. I think the tourists come here and they appreciate the historical museum, the old mission, and so forth, so why not, why not deal with this as you would anything that's been here for that long? I don't know who the loving hands were who designed it, but I would like to know. And so that's all I have to say about it, and thank you very much.
Thanks. Mr. Ebenstein? Patty Love, Jose Arturo Gallegos, and Eve Reinhardt is our final speaker. Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor Murillo, Members of the Council, City Administrator Casey, thank you for your service to our community. I want to be really clear, I stand with the Santa Barbara Farmer's Market, and I think the community stands with the Santa Barbara Farmer's Market. This proposal was not put forward as a revitalization of De La Guerra Plaza. This is what the city's flyer said. It said, quote, "Together with the Santa Barbara Farmer's Market Association, the city intends to relocate the Saturday Farmer's Market to the plaza." This proposal was put forward as part of a plan to relocate the police station to the Cota Lot, to relocate the farmer's market to the De La Guerra Plaza, and therefore to redo De La Guerra Plaza. The notion that now, oh, it's something totally separate and independent, that, that's just not the case. And I believe that the people will hold you accountable for that if you try to say otherwise. I'm, I'm rarely self-referential in comments that I make before public bodies, but 20 years ago, there was a proposal for a new police station in the city of Santa Barbara, and all the committees and the chairs of the Planning Commission, so forth, the mayor endorsed it, put it on the ballot, and it lost by 20 percentage points because it wasn't what the community wanted. In no way has the community signed off on this master plan. And I believe the notion that it's just collecting background data, that's as accurate as the statement which I just read. It's going to come up with a conceptual plan, that plan will take on a life of its own, it'll start to go through the review process, it's not just gathering information. There's no reason to proceed unless it's part of the master plan at this point in time. And I think that the notion that it's much better to have a comprehensive approach to the downtown on these crucial decisions, rather than taking them ad hoc independently, is a much better way to go. It should also be said, De La Guerra Plaza state, is a state historic landmark. It can be tied up for years in its development, in terms of, if the council thinks that individuals in the community are just going to say, oh, do what you want with it, state historic landmark status, it doesn't make any difference at all, I don't think that's accurate in terms of, I think people will ensure that those historic provisions are, are made. I would say too, that, so I, I would say there's no reason to take action today. I would encourage you to look at it more holistically. I'd, I'd say in closing, I rarely agree with him, but I agree with everything that Fred Sweeney said today, and I, I think that this is a process that should be looked at in a comprehensive manner and, and look at it in that context. Thank you for your time.
Thanks. Patty Love?
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Patty Love, and I got two ideas that could possibly result in Farmer's Market being able to stay at the lot, the parking lot at Cota Streets, Cota Street and Santa Barbara Streets. The second idea is probably better than the first, and the first idea is to tear down the existing building and build a taller one. And the second idea is to have two police stations. So instead of one location which is extremely large, there would be two, perhaps fairly large locations, and so they would probably have as much space as they want so that Farmer's Market could remain at the Cota Lot. And I think the two police stations should be a considerable distance from each other, and that would probably be a smart policing strategy. And the current location for the police department could be one of the two. And I think that because of the technology that we have today, for example Skype, this idea could probably work better than at any other time in history. I'm under the impression that there would be less parking if Farmer's Market had to move to De La Guerra Plaza, and they already have a parking problem on Saturdays. You can go there and, and see on Santa Barbara Street, multiple cars waiting to get into that adjacent, adjacent lot. If the police cause Farmer's Market to have to move to a place that is less desirable for the market, then that could damage the police PR image and reputation. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Gallegos?
Well, De La Guerra Plaza, yeah, I could probably use some, some nice improvements, but I will also, you know, keep it, you know, as historical as possible. As far as Farmer's Market, I've, when I first heard about this, that's not a good idea to have the Farmer's Market here at De La Guerra Plaza. Too small, parking issues, and granted, I, I understand where the Farmer's Association is coming from, and those that have spoke before me. But we do need a police station, and the police station on the Cota Street, I think that's a pretty good location. But the thing is, to have the Farmer's Market here on De La Guerra, I think it's a real fast, hasty move. I, I think the best thing to do is for the city and the Farmer's Association to get together, work together, and trying to find an appropriate location where everyone, it's going to satisfy everybody to work together. That's about the only resolution that I can come up with. I, I hope you all can do that, you know, to, to find a location where it's going to benefit everybody and everyone's going to be satisfied. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Ms. Reinhardt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. So I come before you as principally a consumer at the Santa Barbara Farmer's Market. Full disclosure, I'm the wife of a farmer, yeah, and I'm the mother of two children who have gotten extremely good work experience at the Farmer's Market. One of the things that happens when you're the wife of a farmer and, you know, living with it all day, every day, is that you notice that more and more farmland in Santa Barbara County is being taken out of food production and diversified food production and put into cannabis. It's easier and it's much more profitable than growing row crops. Not only is Santa Barbara farmland being diverted to this sole use, but also Santa Barbara water. Oh, and by the way, Santa Barbara farm workers. As the pressures increase exponentially on farmers, more and more farmers are taking their food crops to Los Angeles markets where, and also shipping them to Asia, where they can make far more money than coming to the Santa Barbara market. And many farmers have already left the Santa Barbara market for those very reasons. Santa Barbara needs to support its farmers and its efforts to bring food to local residents, and that means making it easier, not harder, for farmers to market their crops to Santa Barbara locals. Otherwise, they will go where they can be supported and can actually make a lot more money. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. That closes public comment, it's to the council for, oh, did I forget something?
I said it's a speech about, I never got called.
Come on up, Mr. Edelman, we would never say no to you, but...
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Oh, you know what? It didn't have your name. It just said Farmer's Market.
Well, I'm sorry, that's my fault.
Okay, that was you. Go ahead, please.
All right, sorry about that.
Okay.
So I believe this is my third or fourth time addressing the council on this issue. You know, back in October, we did get news through media that we were potentially going to be losing our Farmer's Market site. Of course, it sent us into kind of a tailspin trying to figure out how to deal with the situation, but sort of what we have gone from the beginning of this process over the last few months is a really desire for a solution-oriented approach to this. We didn't feel that being combative with the city was the best way to approach the situation, but really trying to work with city staff on finding a solution to our predicament and really the possible financial devastation that any kind of potential move could have on an association. This not only affects our Farmer's Market Association, but our farmers, all the surrounding merchants that have signed long-term leases that have invested in the city in that downturn area where the Farmer's Market is located because the Farmer's Market is there. I'm talking like a 30-year lease by French Press because the Farmer's Market is there on Saturdays, just one example, but there's a number of different areas. So, over the past few months, I feel that we've been very actively working relationship with city staff through this process, assessing factors such as size of the site to ensure all of our farmers can fit, access to and within the site, with enough nearby parking to accommodate our 3,000 to 5,000 weekly shoppers that visit our market every week, and the overall atmosphere of the location, all of which really make our Farmer's Market experience so special and accessible to the community. If just a small fraction of our weekly shoppers start, stop coming due to a downgrade in any of these elements, it could gravely impact the fiscal sustainability of our association and many of our local farmers. The problem that we are facing at the moment, after our lengthy assessment of various sites, is that any move is looking to be a downgrade from what we currently have. Smaller, more compact space with the inability to add new local farmers to that market, much less easily accessible parking, loss of those beautiful shade trees that make our market so inviting for families in that commuter lot. I'm also additionally concerned with regards to the De La Guerra Plaza revitalization project, that the needs of the community are likely not completely compatible with the needs of a Farmer's Market. What we really need to make this site work is a clean slate, a clean canvas, everything paved over a nice big smooth surface to barely be able to fit in the site. As we start getting input from the community, and it's very important that we do so, every new, little addition that takes away 100 square feet here, 200 square feet there, will not allow us to be able to fit into that, that physical space. Our association, our farmers, surrounding merchants to the adjacent market in our current location, and thousands of residents feel like moving the Farmer's Market is a really bad idea. I think the De La Guerra Plaza revitalization, just as a project in general, has a lot of promise, and, but just for our association and our needs, we have a real big issue with the size of the space and the actual parking and access to our space. So any loss in revenue, any loss in customers, if a customer circles the block once or twice and they can't find a parking space, they're going to go shop somewhere else. If they come back the following week and they try and circle the block a couple times, they can't find a place to park, they may never come back, and we lose them as lifelong customers. We have had a very good working relationship with the city, and we really want to make that continue, but we're really hoping to work towards the best possible outcome for our entire community as a whole. We know that the importance of the police station, it's incredibly important, it's vital that they get a police station built, but at what cost and what expense, and to, on, from our perspective, it could be longstanding. So, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Sneddon has a, a question for the...
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edelman. You, we spoke early on, and we've spoken, so this is sort of a follow-up question. So, from where we are now, it, it sounds like De La Guerra Plaza is not suitable. I just, you've been offered any space, basically, and De La Guerra Plaza, I just, I want to confirm this.
Sure.
De La Guerra Plaza was your first choice of those. So there was Lot 11, there'd been the high school, there are a lot of different spaces offered, but of all of those, your first choice was De La Guerra Plaza, and it's a far second choice. Is that, am I hearing all of that correctly?
That is correct. We have assessed dozens of site in the city, sites in the city, really mostly focusing on the, the size of the space, the access to and from the site. De La Guerra Plaza had the most promise, I think, going into this, of all the sites we've looked at. We've talked, talked about closing multiple blocks of State Street and the problems there. We've talked about issues of taking up city parking lots that are already at full capacity during our events, so we'd basically be losing this huge pocket of parking during the event, and that's really key. So yeah, it is a major downgrade from what we currently have. We're trying to make the best of a really bad situation moving forward, and we really do appreciate the open dialogue. We understand the working relationship and, that we've had with the city for years. We've been blessed with a 35-year use for that lot, and we really hope to continue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. We'll close public comment, we'll go to, Ms. Sneddon, did you want to start our deliberations? Go ahead, please.
I just, this is such a difficult topic, and I realize that what is on the agenda is just the revitalization of De La Guerra Plaza. I want to say first, I treasure the farmers, I treasure the plaza on its own, independent and decoupled from all these other issues. For me, I remember in high school when it used to have benches, and I loved those benches, and I spent a lot of time in the plaza just as a place to be with sunshine and grass. I also treasure our police, and they deserve better than what they have right now. Initially, I thought De La Guerra Plaza would be an upgrade. I thought it was really a wonderful option, an opportunity for the farmers. I was very excited about it. What I hear loud and clear is that the farmers don't want to move, and De La Guerra Plaza is sort of like, not great. And for someone who loves the plaza and treasures the plaza, I don't want to jeopardize the revitalization and redesign of the plaza to be somebody's second-best alternative. I want it to be a community center, I want it to be all that it can be, take the time to do that properly, to treasure our historic resources, to really have it be decoupled and have it be its own. I just, I'm, I've, I've lost interest really in having it be second-best. With that, I would like to maintain the Farmer's Market, and I believe it's time for another police subcommittee meeting to really tackle this and make final decisions before we go about not being sure what we're doing with the plaza or different things. So I think, you know, cart before the horse, we've got to decide where we're putting the police station, then everything from there to fall into place. I will support this funding because I want to see De La Guerra Plaza get the tender-loving care it deserves, and, and to have it be really the vital center of our community that it can be, it deserves better. It deserves better than being second-best, and it deserves better than, than being designed around alternate uses. And I'm a big free speech person who really loves coming to the plaza on Saturday mornings for whatever protest is happening, so with that in mind also. So I want to support this as independent as its own plaza revitalization, if that's possible.
Okay. Mr. Dominguez?
So I want to start with the big picture. I'm definitely in, in favor of downtown revitalization, I think everyone here is, and I'm in favor of the plaza revitalization, and I'm in favor of it in that order. I think you have to start at the higher altitude and pick all the parts that you're going to work on, and even if you don't work on them simultaneously, you have to start with a master plan or a comprehensive plan, however you want to frame it. And I have to say, reading this book has really informed me, this is the book that Ms. Peterson recommended, the Plaza de La, Plaza de La Guerra Reconsidered. There's amazing information in here. One of the pages is interesting, it shows 1904 in the plaza, and there's an electric car. So, they've been around a long time, maybe we need to think about that in, in this process. So, I also want to thank Ms. Elidge and her organization, I think the process they led was amazing, just beautiful, people who came really enjoyed it and were able to make their impact. You saw some of the... You saw some of the feedback they gave, and I think that's going to help us significantly in this process. I think we should wait until for this master plan and comprehensive report. I think we should have another AIA-type charrette. I don't know if we've done anything with those great drawings that came out of that process, and combine it with the Cosmont Report, the whatever happens with our Paseo Nuevo plans, because that property, State Street itself, De La Guerra Plaza, and the City Hall parking lot, we need to take into account all of those properties and all of the uses of those properties and the economic, environmental, and historical implications of the uses we're trying to push on those four properties because they have to be unified. So doing this piecemeal is the least impactful way to do it. I agree, there's lots of excitement, and I want to push this forward. I want to be as effective as we can. The contract with the vendor we're talking about, one of the things it would do is the EIR, and we can't do an EIR until we know the scope. The contract explicitly excludes the City Hall parking lot, so I'd like to know if we can either work that back into the contract, again, because I want to see a unified plan. I think we need to reconsider that parking lot. And if we're going to really be serious about changing people's parking downtown and patterns, we have to lead by example with City Hall. So if we're going to change use, one of the original uses of De La Guerra Plaza was housing. There were adobe houses, and then later on, they were occupied by commercial uses around the plaza. And I think we've all talked positively about the need to have more people living downtown if we want more people being downtown. So we need to reconsider if there's going to be housing there, and I think if we do end up with housing on City Hall's parking lot, that's going to impact how we want to revision Plaza de La Guerra. The other part of the contract that I want to talk about is the, it says there's unknown details of how the design process will unfold, and R.R. will refine and negotiate these tasks. I think it makes more sense to bifurcate this contract into two parts, the design part, the charrette part, the revisioning part, and then the contractor who will come in and actually do the design. I'm afraid there's a built-in conflict if you have one party trying to do both of those, particularly if it's a fixed price, because they may run out of funds and try to settle on whatever's in front of them at that time if there's no more funds. So I think we should bifurcate it. So what I'd recommend is that we move this contract and that process to the committee, and we create a timeline that includes that process and any type of charrette or visioning that would bring in the community. We've had one community event, and I think we should do at least two more to really look at the Paseo Nuevo, Plaza de La Guerra, the City Hall parking lot. And I agree that we shouldn't make this outcome determinant of the police station until we've chosen a police station site. Thank you.
Just let me get it straight. You're thinking the City Hall parking lot would be good for the Farmer's Market?
No.
No, the police department?
I think what we need to do is figure out what the City Hall parking lot is good for, what's the highest use of that land environmentally, economically, and historically, and then have that part of the planning for the plaza and Paseo Nuevo, because these are all linked. In fact, one of the plans in here from the eighties was to make De La Guerra a pedestrian street. There are several plans in here since nineteen sixty-eight. It's interesting, November nineteen sixty-eight was when they did the work at Stork Placeta, and that month was my birth month, my birth year, and it's just odd that that's how long it's been since we've had a significant public work at that site. The other thing particularly about the timing now is if we end up not putting the police station at Coda and not needing to move the Farmer's Market, we might want to wait a year or two to do any kind of serious public work here because we're at the most expensive time in Santa Barbara history in terms of construction. Labor costs are at an all-time peak, construction costs, staff time is really at a premium. So if we didn't have the police station as a reason to do this exigently, we should probably wait till a recession starts, and we need to get people working again to do this project.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
Not the planning, but the actual construction.
Lot to consider there. So first, I just want to thank everyone who came today to really articulate the issue. I think it's abundantly clear that they are two separate projects here. There's the revitalization of De La Guerra, and then there is the Farmer's Market. And I especially want to thank our farmers who came today. I see, Mr. Luhon, I've known you for many years, going back to our Surf Rider days, and I know you have the best interest of the community just from our personal relation, not that, and everyone else does too, but I want to particularly thank you for your input and your feedback on what this means to the farmers. In addition, you know, when our farmers are speaking to us, we need to listen because the family farm across the United States, it's pretty soon it's going to be the only place you're going to find one is if you Google, if you Google it and see what it was. They're being consolidated in large agribusinesses all across the country. And even though we have our high land uses here, we've somehow managed here locally to have a vibrant agriculture community here, and so I don't want to endanger that with our market. The reason I asked the question before, and I'm more inclined to support Councilmember Sneddon's position, I would like to move forward with the De La Guerra project, but I also want to refer the police station back to the subcommittee. Want to look at other potential sites. In particular, Mr. Evenstein and I had some email exchanges this morning. He raised some other potential sites that haven't been looked at, or actually, they were looked at many years ago, and there might be an opportunity there. And so I think we really need to vet other potential sites, and we received a number of emails from the community, all saying, you know, respect our Farmer's Market and the tradition that it has, and this would be another opportunity for the community to input and to see if there's any other sites that we've missed. I think we need to do our due diligence, and there's an opportunity there. So I think going back to this subcommittee to, as expeditiously possible, because I feel we need to move the police station forward, but at the same time, do our diligence to see if there are other potential sites. One that I'm interested in personally, I would say, is relooking again at Earl Warren in light of some of the new information about their future is, if there's an opportunity there, just as an example. And so what it really comes down to, you know, we have, we have a need to revitalize our downtown, and I appreciate Councilmember Dominguez's want to look at the master plan, the Cosmont study, but again, those can take a number of years on this. It looks like, you know, conceptual design, there's environmental work that would be done. I think moving that forward, because the sooner we revitalize downtown, the sooner we're going to get the benefits of it, and I think ultimately, we can move this project forward now, the revitalization part of De La Guerra Plaza. We can continue to look at other potential sites for the police station that would allow us to potentially keep the Farmer's Market where it is, and we can move those forward. And in a couple months, we're going to get more information from the Cosmont study, and we can evaluate those and have community input on all these. If we were to have this grand master plan, I don't know off the top of my head right now, that would seem to me to have a lot of resources that we would need in terms of staff time, what are the project priorities such as, that are in the pipeline right now that have been going on for years that would be supplanted on that, such as the historic resources element that we're trying to finalize, that has been a priority for many of you in here. So I'm not sure if Councilmember Sneddon's was a motion? Was it a motion?
Why don't you go ahead and make a motion?
So I'll make the motion that we approve the staff recommendation, but also refer the police station back to the subcommittee, to, the police station subcommittee, to look at other potential sites. In particular, Mr. Casey has it. I'm interested in the concept that Mr. Evenstein brought forward. Just for the record, it has to do with the school district and potential sites there, so I don't want to make it some big secret. Now that, Earl Warren and whatever else is out there, so I'll make that motion.
If you would add to your motion on that to put a representative from the Farmer's Market Association on the De La Guerra Plaza revitalization?
Be glad to do that.
Committee, I thought was a good idea from Mr. Jordan. Do you still second that?
Is that whether or not, I mean, so either way, a member of the Farmer's Market on that committee?
Right. Well, I'm willing to second it if you don't. I just heard you say second.
Oh, I did, and then you added something, and then to that, I would then add someone then from the Santa Barbara Historic Trust, if we're going to be adding people.
There's not someone already on that?
No.
Okay. So someone from the historic?
Oh, we have Historic Landmarks Commission, but we don't have anyone from?
No, no, there is someone from the Historic Landmarks Commission.
Yes.
I thought you meant the Trust for Historic Preservation.
I do. I mean, if we're adding people to the subcommittee.
So Trust for Historic Preservation and Farmer's Market Association.
And it's for the, just for the De La Guerra?
For the De La Guerra Plaza revitalization.
If you want to put that in the motion and you want to second it, I'm open to that.
Second.
Okay. Do we have a motion? We're good.
Madam Mayor, excuse me just a minute.
Yes, go ahead.
Is part of the motion still something about the police station?
Yeah. That the police, that the police station committee would take one more look at other locations besides the Coda commuter lot. Look at the moment. Again, another review.
Okay. Well, Mr. Colon, is that an appropriate motion to make at this time, since we weren't agendized to really discuss the police station per se?
Good question, Mr. Rouse.
Well, I just don't want to confuse the motion. We're trying to go forward with the De La Guerra development and funding right now, so I'm not, I don't want to cloud this.
It's a direction to yourselves, and so the Brown Act would authorize you to direct staff to take action and bring it back to you. You can direct yourself, I think that's fine. My concern about the ad hoc committees is that they are a secret, and we want to be careful to do as much of this in public. So the other comment I want to make is very general, and it's to clarify, the city and the council have a long way to go before you can settle on a site or even a preferred site. The best we could call the Coda lot at this point is a potential preferred alternative. So the environmental law is going to restrain you from binding the city to a particular site for quite a long time before analysis can be done and studied by everyone.
That's understood, I think. So Ms. Sneddon, you have something to add as the secondor of the motion?
I think in light of Councilmember Rouse's comments, I think it might be a good idea to not have that be part of the motion, but have it be a recommendation and not have it to say one last time or anything like that, but maybe separate from this motion. We want to discuss at what point we start having those as public discussion meetings or not, but let's.
Okay, so let me go through. So I'll just move the staff recommendation. That's the motion. And then separately outside of it, staff direction to go back and look at the police station subcommittee and come back as appropriate to council.
She's saying, don't add that in the formal motion.
It's not part, it's not part of the motion, but just outside.
But we did want to say to appoint?
Appoint the two members.
Right. Farmer's Market and Trust for Historic Preservation.
Second.
Okay. So Ms. Harmon had her light on before you, Mr. Rouse, if she could go first.
Thank you. So I'll try to keep my comments brief because I'm going to be echoing what a number of my colleagues have said. First, I'd like to start by voicing my support for and solidarity with our farmers. My daughter and I go to the various Farmer's Markets all the time, and not just to buy our produce, but to commune with our friends and neighbors, and it's been a huge part of our lives. But one of the speakers talked about the importance of delinking these issues, and so I really want to echo the importance of that. For me, I appreciate that we've taken out from this conversation now the talk about the police station. I couldn't support the motion if that was included, because to me, they're two different issues. I think when we're talking about revitalization of De La Guerra Plaza, we need to think about what that's going to do for downtown. I think they're totally separate issues. They're talking about Farmer's Market, talking about the police station. These are conversations that we obviously need to have, that obviously need to be prioritized, but we're having a separate conversation today. To me, I also appreciate Councilmember Dominguez and his interest in having a larger fifty-thousand-foot plan, but it is true that what we need to do downtown can't wait. In my view, it's important that we get moving immediately. This is part of what we're doing today, and I was very much swayed by the information that was presented to us in regards to the fact that the work that's going to be done with this funding will have to be done regardless of any potential use that we could make of De La Guerra Plaza. So for that reason, I'd like us to move forward. I think it's really important to local businesses, it's local to folks, important to folks in my district, and I think to everyone in the city.
Thanks. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I was a member of the Downtown Organizations Government Relations Committee that looked at this entire De La Guerra project the first time when we had the RDA funding, and the designs that came forward, the fountains, and talked about King Carlos and all those kind of fun things we did back then. It's not that it hasn't been vetted or talked about before, and we lost the RDA funding. In fact, when the RDA, when the funding or the RDA went away, when it was taken back by the state, we almost lost the Coda lot along with our other parking lot. So, you know, this is, everything's in flux, and so nothing belongs to any one thing. But what's important now is the voters told us with Measure C that they wanted these infrastructure things done, they wanted a police station built, they wanted the roads paved. And the one thing that people really want to have done is a revitalization of the downtown. This is our opportunity, because we're trying to lead the way for the private sector. Our opportunity is to redo this civic center, make it a wonderful place in whatever iteration it has, and everybody should participate that's interested. But as we try to encourage the private sector to fix up their buildings and fix up their properties, we should take the lead first by fixing up our front yard. As you look at De La Guerra Plaza and you stand in the middle of the plaza and look around, there's some fabulous architecture. Some of it's gone into a little bit of disrepair, and you have some historic elements everywhere. It's up to us to bring this back and make it a functional, public, clean space. It's the broken window we need to fix downtown. It's an urban problem that happens everywhere. It's our job to get this done, and we should get it done sooner than later. And as Mr. Edelman said, they, the farmers have been at the table, talking to staff and whatnot, and I really hope that conversation continues. I don't know if this is going to be the final solution for them or not. I don't know that the Coda lot's going to be the final, and none of us know where the PD station's going to go. I was also on the first police station committee when we were, not the very first one back in the nineties, but when we talked about RDA funding to build a police station. And we really did vet a lot of spaces, public, private, everywhere, all over town. So, you know, there's a lot of background on that. There's almost no space you can name that we didn't chat about back then and haven't chatted about recently, so that can go on further. But it's important that we take the lead. We need to make a wonderful space. It's the public space, it's our civic center. When we finally get around to getting the library plaza done, that'll be our cultural center. I mean, these are all parts that are going to make downtown clean and wonderful again, and we owe it to the community to not form another committee and have another study. We owe the committee to move on this. We've been talking about it for a long, long time. We've been talking about master plans and circulation for a long, long time. Let's approve this motion today and move forward and at least get the ball rolling, because I think the community's expecting of us, and certainly the people that voted for Measure C are expecting of us as well. Thank you.
You're supportive of the motion, then? Okay. Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, you know, I'm pretty conflicted with this issue because my family came here in the sixties to work in farms and fields, and, you know, that creates a bit of an inner conflict with me. And with the Rosen showing a clip of Martin Luther King and Cesar Chavez Day coming up pretty soon, I've been reading hundreds of emails, and I've been seeing, you know, dozens of people come up to speak, but I feel like there's a portion of the population that's not being heard. I don't know why that is. So I want to ask the farmers, why is that? You know, we're asking the city to present a lot of information, but I feel like I need to be educated more from you farmers. So if you can try to show me why it seems as if right now, there's only one portion of our population that's speaking about this issue, I would personally really appreciate it. I know that the police department has a rocky history with diversity, but as of recently, their leadership has taken great strides to diversify and locify their, sorry, English is a second language for me, to diversify their force. So I admire and respect them a lot for that. So I would just personally like more information from all of you about how you operate and who you serve, and I will also support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll be supporting the motion. We talk a lot about bringing Thank you. So I'll be supporting the motion. We talk a lot about bringing families downtown and making the space friendly for that. Ms. Kelly talked about programming, and I know that families are always looking for something fun and inexpensive to do. And so I support that. I like the new makeup of the, of the subcommittee. I, I just wanted to remind people, because we've been receiving really negative emails lately, making the city seem like the big bad landlord. And Mr. Casey, am I correct that we've leased the Coda commuter lot to the farmer's market for $1 a year for 30 years? And that's generous. We've been very supportive of the farmer's market. I think our Public Works Department and the Police Department also, on Saturday mornings, are there to make sure the cars are cleared out. And so I, I just want to say that, that we're, let's maintain that good relationship, that I, we're, it's to the, it's to the council right now. And I'm telling you that I've received emails demonizing the city, and I don't appreciate that. So let's dial it back. Let's go back to working together. And, and if we can find another place for the police station, then, then we're going to make an effort to do that. That's it. Your light is still on, Mr. Dominguez?
I was, I was hoping to ask the council to consider kind of a technical thing, but breaking up the contract into two groups. The group that will do the design production, in other words, take the work that's been done in terms of what are some of the alternatives, and come up with the end product that the city wants to see built. And then the second group that actually does that design. And again, because there's a built-in conflict if you have one group doing both. Because, for example, one easy thing is, if they want to make a big second part of the contract profit, they produce the biggest, most extensive set of ideas that won't necessarily bring the return on the investment we're looking for. So that, and again, the reason I want to make sure we do that is, is if you look at this book and you read through the stories of, of all the different things that they've talked about, and the city's done, to look at different improvements, one of them including an underground bunker for City Hall. I think the reason nothing's happened in 50 years is because there's no easy answer. There's no panacea for all the problems. And, and I think Ms. Khan really pointed it out, when she said, you could do whatever you want, is it really going to change the use of the plaza? And I don't want to see us spend $2 million. I mean, we're, we're talking about $300,000 or $400,000, and I want to go through the numbers with you in a second, a ton of money, and we're going to wake up one day and the grass is going to be paved over with very nice tile. But will that really change how people use downtown Santa Barbara? Someone talked about moving here. Is anyone not moving to Santa Barbara because we have grass there versus tiles? Are people not shopping at Paseo Nuevo because there's grass, there are not tiles? We need to have a full vetted process in figuring out what is going to be the outcome of spending these, these millions of dollars. So Mr. Casey, the, there was $12,000 that was the initial contract with RRM on March 5th. The $300,000, can you tell me what that amount is? Or Ms. Bjork?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez. The contract amendment is for $199,000, and that takes the project through Phase 2A. And then Phases 3 and 4 include construction documents that would be negotiated later.
And so what is the $300,000 that we're appropriating?
That includes funding for this project, and then environmental review, which is, will be a separate contract, and then also possible additional archaeological investigation and project management.
So the, the 199 doesn't include an EIR?
No.
Okay, because I've, I've heard a couple council members talk about environmental work. So what is it we're talking about when we're talking about environmental work? I know this week they're pulling core samples to look at the soil, and that's already taken care of. That's not part of the 199?
That's right. That's already been funded. We have a contract. We put an RFP out, Applied Earthworks. We'll be conducting that work next week, actually. And that will be the basis of our environmental review. We will be putting out an RFP for environmental review.
So what are my colleagues talking about when they think this is paying for some type of environmental work?
This contract does not. It's, the appropriation of funding will cover that environmental cost.
So this is covering just design costs and the process leading up to the design? In other words, asking RRM to tell us what they think should go here?
That's correct.
Okay. If you don't want to vote for the motion, you don't have to?
I would make a friendly amendment to the motion to break this contract up into those two phases. One phase where either RRM or another contractor looks at the data we've gathered, looks at the historical suggestions for the plaza, and comes up with what they think is the, the, you know, $2 million idea, or whatever our budget is for this. And then a second company does the work to remove that conflict of interest. So that would be my friendly amendment to Mr. Friedman's motion.
I appreciate your willingness to put that forward, but I'll be sticking to the original motion.
So thanks, Mr. Dominguez. Very thoughtful comments. Ms. Clerk, will you read the motion for us, please?
Yes. Motion by Mayor Patem Friedman, seconded by Councilmembers Sneddon to move the staff recommendation and appoint a member of the farmer's market community and a member of the Trust for Historic Preservation to the De La Guerra Revitalization Committee.
That's it. If you'll take a roll call, please.
No.
Mayor Patem Friedman.
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon.
Yes.
Councilmember Rouse.
Aye.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Yes.
And Mayor Mario.
Aye. Six to one?
Six to one with Councilmember Dominguez voting no.
Okay, very good. And the general direction to bring us something back about looking for other places for the, looking again at police station locations. We're going to close this item, and we're going to take a 10-minute break. There's a lot of computers that need to be hooked up for the next item. 10 minutes, recess.